To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Present.
Councilman DeWitt?
Present.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn? Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Thank you very much, and I apologize, I skipped over the invocation. If Pastor Ernie Parvath of Vision Baptist would please step forward, I apologize, everybody. If you could all please rise, my apologies. I've only done that how many times? He never missed this, so I apologize.
I thought it was his fault.
Not his fault. Thank you for being here with us this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me. Father, we just want to begin by praying for these at the Bahamas and this hurricane that you would continue to turn that. We thank you, Father, for the blessing that we received by it not coming our way. Father, we pray for those that have been affected. We pray that you'll just be with them, let them know that you're there with them to walk through this devastation. Father, we want to now pray for this council meeting. Lord, I know it's a very hard time. Typically, half the people come are satisfied, the other half go away unhappy with the decision, Father, and therefore, we pray for this city council, that you would give them wisdom, clarity of mind, and, Father, that you would be with those who do not hear the answer, that they want to hear, Father, that you would just be with them and help them to receive it peacefully and in order. And, Father, we pray that all of this is done to bring unity in our community in everything that we do. Father, we pray that you are glorified in it, and we just thank you for it, and we give you all the glory. Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, very much. Thank you for being here this evening. And I must say, in three-plus years, that's the first time I've ever done that, so I apologize. First time for everything, see, so thank you. Very nice message. Thank you so much. We're going to start with public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time? Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. This nice new system here that works so well. Mine is just on this interlocal agreement, it's under the consent agenda, item F. Every year, I say the same thing. It's a no-brainer. I mean, I see the deputies out on the water all the time, and I'm on the Waterways Advisory Committee, and we prioritize the money, and the grants are the -- this is one of the most popular ones. I mean, we always run out of money, but the city always matches, they do exactly what they're supposed to, and what we do is we watch if people do what they say they're going to do, and otherwise, we can cut them back. And if there's anything left over, we just spread it out. But, anyway, be sure you vote for it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Oh, do I have to say? I don't have to say who I am. You know who I am.
Matthew McGrath from Bonita Springs. Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Welcome, John.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Honorable Counsel. My name is John Pano. I represent the Bonita Springs Downtown Alliance and CGT Kayaks. I'd like to talk about item number eight, and first off, I want to state how important I do feel addressing the stormwater is. This is crucial to us, not just the stormwater, but all our water issues. But instituting a tax when we don't necessarily need to institute one is not the proper way to go at my -- at this point, at least that's what I'm hearing from our membership. They would like to see a form-based code passed, and right now, we've missed opportunities to have a microbrewery and taproom downtown, to have outside dining, entertainment, music. All these things are missing downtown because of a lack of code, and the lack of code has even affected the development of other parts of the city. This is stopping us from generating valuable needed tax monies that could be used for stormwater. Secondly, by doing that, would make our bamboo properties and other properties more available and better for -- attractive for developers to buy in the property with sell, again, putting great deal of money in our coffers that could handle the stormwater. It's not that anybody's against this, this has to happen, it needs to happen, it's just how we raise the money. Secondly, thank you all for addressing this issue. This is so crucial.
Thank you, John. Thanks for being here this evening. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward at this time. Bonnie, welcome.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Just my two cents worth on the way we're approaching the stormwater utility, if we desperately need it, but with all of the new building in town and the value of houses being increased, I don't see this fitting under a new tax for anybody. It just seems so unfair.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Welcome, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Jesse Purdon for the record. I'm the chairman of the Outreach Committee, and I'm also the vice chairman of the Charter Review Commission. So unfortunately, everybody wasn't here today, but I just had some thoughts I'd like to share on this upcoming tax. I've had a lot of people who've reached out to me, and they were curious on whether this is two taxes or one, and I just want to clarify, this is one, and then I've had other people who are saying, "Well, this isn't an ad valorem, so it's not a tax, it's a fee." And I just kind of wanted to clear that out. We're arguing semantics, whether it's a tax or it's a fee. The reality is that we're increasing property, or we're increasing taxation on the citizens of Bonita Springs. And my only issue with that, and I'm not saying necessarily that the direction you're going is the wrong direction, what I'm saying is the financial mechanism whereby you're trying to get there is something that we need to really pause and consider, because we raised $740,000 above what we thought we were going to get when property values increased in Bonita Springs this year. Okay? So think about that, 740 from the top, additional. Then additionally, last week, we got $3 million from FEMA. Those dollars are to go to a rainy day fund, and that rainy day fund is specifically for the swales, which is what we're addressing with this 1.5 million that doesn't even cover the project that we're talking about doing. It simultaneously creates a mechanism whereby each year, we have to decide whether it's going to go up or down. Those things definitely caused pause for me, so I think it's very important that the people who are watching at home pay attention Monday. Monday's going to say a lot about what's going on, the direction we're going. When we raised 740,000 more than we thought, then we get 3 million back from FEMA, and now we're considering creating a new mechanism to tax ourselves, and part of that calculation is additionally based on state dollars that we are allowed to apply for, the same that every other municipality in the state of Florida is allowed to apply for them. State dollars are not a guaranteed thing, especially in that big of a pool, and as type priorities change. Look at the shooting last year. Look at one of the cities that was completely annihilated by a storm. Priorities change, then those dollars change. So to try to calculate and base something based on arbitrary dollars that may or may not be there, I don't think is the most sound decision for us as a city. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jim Magnus. We've got a number of properties in Bonita Springs. I'd like to talk about the stormwater as well. My understanding was that the reason that you're going after the stormwater to make a separate district is because you're required to to get additional state and federal funding. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but all I can say is that in talking to Molly Williams, who is the engineer that you guys have that's handling this thing, she tells me that even those properties, those commercial properties, that have their own stormwater that they take care of on-site, that you don't have any vehicle at this point, and you're not considering actually not taxing those people. I mean, if I've put up a water system on my property, I should be able to get the benefit of that water system, because it's not feeding into the city system. So I'd like you to look at that. The next thing is this building monument, luminaries, this new code that you guys have out, it's going to cost me, just for one of my properties, over $6,000 to put in all-new light fixtures. You know, I just think that you've got to take into consideration safety. The downlight doesn't provide enough light in our properties to be able to go around on the inside part of the property, and that is causing us a problem, because for safety reason, if you were to change the code so that it would say something to the effect where light's on the internal of your property or adjacent to commercial property, and if it does go across a city road, that's where Jason Albert, your code enforcement guy, is telling me that the problem is. So if you could change it that way, at least you aren't going to be, you know, causing problems for, you know, businesses like ours. We're a small business, we're just a family business, and we're getting nailed on that. I also think that you need to put all the properties up for request for proposal. If you try to micromanage exactly what it is that you want, you'd be better off to put them out for proposal, see what you get, and you can pick something that you like. If you don't like it, you can always put it back out for request for proposal again. As Jesse was talking about, our commercial property assessments have gone up. One went up 145 percent, one went up 70 percent, one went up 24 percent, and one went up 14 percent. So you obviously are getting a substantial amount from the commercial side, you know, taking consideration those people that are paying some of the taxes, please. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public? Good evening.
I, Dwight Essman, live off Paradise Road. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I did bring some notes. Most of you have heard my points before, I just want to reiterate them, particularly for some of the people out here. The reasons for a stormwater utility fee. Current funding levels will never be enough to correct the flooding caused by stormwater runoff. The city, I believe, has identified a need for $39 million in capital improvements over the next 10 years, and that doesn't count maintenance and repairs. Water intrusion into homes results in very expensive repairs, which will eventually affect everyone's flood insurance rates. The fee will provide a dedicated funding source that allows the city to apply for grants that they might not get otherwise. It will ensure that commercial properties with lots of impervious service pay their fair share. Under the current system, commercial properties contribute 7% of the total funding, but have 29% of the total impervious surface in the city. Other cities in southwest Florida with yearly fees are Cape Coral at $110, Fort Myers at $54.72, and Naples at $160.20. As of a 2016 survey, over 160 cities in Florida had a stormwater utility with an average rate of about $80 a year, including 32 that are in the southwest Florida Water Management District. This $50 annual residential fee is much lower, based on that ERU equivalent residential unit of other communities. A good stormwater management system helps ensure clean water in our rivers and Gulf, and we know what an effect that had a few months back. Every dollar must be used for stormwater management here in the city, and even if your home never floods, flooding is a problem for Bonita Springs that lowers the quality of life. Just a few inches of water on a roadway will drastically slow down first responders. So lives could be saved with better stormwater management. I don't believe it's up to the southwest Florida Water Management District, Lee County, the state of Florida, or the U.S. government to fix this problem. It's up to us. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, Counsel. To go back to the stormwater management, sir, and what you were just --
Is your name?
My name is Chris Magnus. I apologize. Businesses, when you are adding this additional fee to small businesses, even at landlords, it trickles down to other small businesses and triplenet leases. The city of Bonita Springs is getting a reputation amongst commercial real estate agents as a city that's difficult to do business in. Adding more taxes, adding more fees, adding more cost is driving real estate agents to push tenants, even national tenants, towards North Naples or Estero. This is something that I'm seeing with my property right now. As far as businesses paying 7% or whatever percentage that is, that is not taking into account the water management systems that businesses already have to pay for, already have to put into place, and do not affect the city water. We're getting hammered by taxes and fees, and it's making it very difficult to do business in Bonita Springs, and I would appreciate it if you guys would take that into consideration as you are voting on more taxes, fees, et cetera. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hello there. Welcome.
You know me.
I do. Nice to see you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ann Wertz, and I live in Bonita Heights Mobile Home Park on Bonita Beach Road. And it is a small park, and we only have mobile homes, and for one thing, I don't see that we should be charged. What a big, beautiful home that has everything, the same price for this water stuff to be taken care of, and I talked to a lot of people in our park, and a lot of them are very upset. Our taxes keep going up. We only own old mobile homes. We don't have much coming into our park. We have no pool. We have nothing that a lot of people have, and I think that if they're going to charge, they should look at the price a little bit and not charge somebody in an old mobile home that has not much money, the same as a great big, beautiful home with your pool and all of the stuff you people have, because we can't afford it, and a lot of the people in our park are about ready to say, "Boy, I'm going to have to get out of here. I can't afford to have a mobile home in Bonita." And it's just like, every time we turn around, they want more and more and more, and even our park keeps wanting to add things and make people pay for trees being cut, and you have no idea what the prices for the old people have, and I'm going to be 83, and it's a little hard. God bless you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your preference? Okay, has been a motion to accept in a second? Is there any discussion? Amy?
I'm going to pull E. I'm going to vote yes, but I want to talk about it.
Okay, let's pull E.
You don't have to pull. We can vote. I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, there's been a motion to accept in a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Item E. Amy?
I just, I actually have a question for Derek, because we had a discussion previously about having the city open for meetings, okay? Or, and we were supposed to work on something, so have we worked on it? I guess.
We're working on a policy on --
Yeah, a policy.
Public access to our facilities, and some of the limitations on that. Obviously, we didn't have time to do that between that meeting and this one.
And I see you're going to be the keynote speaker here, aren't you?
I am? That's new to me. I solely addressed it to me, but I didn't --
Unless I'm reading it wrong, but I'm so happy, I mean, I think it's a good venue for them, but anyway, but it's really, I'm just wondering if we have --
They're just looking for a check.
Can we come and listen to you, or is it like, no, but seriously, I just wanted an update on whether our policy was moved.
Yeah, we're actually wrapping up the policy about utilization of city facilities, whether it's parks, or halls, anything, in with some policies on controlling the use. So we've had questions about free speech, what about disruptive speakers, all those kind of things are a policy I'm working on with Meg, and so that all coming together as one item.
So things are more complicated, are always more complicated?
We were already working on the latter issue when the issue of the other senator's visit came up.
Thank you so much.
And you've previously, not this particular organization, the Florida Chapter American Planning Association, but you've previously approved very similar educational symposiums for the Florida Planning and Zoning Association, Engineers Association, so with credits.
I don't have any problem with this, I just wondered what we were doing. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Great. Anything else, Counsel? Okay, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. If I could please have Paulette Walters, Bob Walters, Tina McNeese, Patricia Angel, or, and I'm sorry, my eyes are going, and Mary Ann Baker. I think I messed --
Angel.
And Councilman Gibson has, is here, so he's present as well. Hello, please.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Wonderful.
Very nice to see you.
Very nice to meet you.
Hello.
Thank you so much.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. Hello. Mary Ann, that's my mother's name, I can remember that. Hi, how are you? Yes, yeah, nice to see you. How are you? Hi, nice to see you. You'll get a kick out of this, see? I'm going to hold this out a little bit so you can see it, all right? And this is a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17 through the 23rd, 2019, whereas September 17, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and now, therefore, I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2019, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigorously, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, City of Bonita Springs, Florida, September 4, 2019. Hallelujah for what you're doing. You're man and women after my own heart. Would you like to say a few words?
Barefoot --
Yes.
The barefooted chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution. Thank you so very much for your time and consideration in doing this for our request, because we are having a big celebration in luncheon for all of the chapters in southeast, southwest Florida to celebrate this week.
Great. And where and when will that be? Will you let me know?
It is Saturday, it's a week from Saturday, Saturday, the 10th. Would you like to attend?
I'd like to attend.
I will make that arrangement, absolutely.
I'd like to attend, because I've talked about the Mayflower, but I thought we also had relatives that fought in the Revolutionary War.
Wonderful. It's the 14th, it's a week from --
In Massachusetts, so I think I'm a member of --
Yes, you are. You could be easily a member of, they have Sons of the American Revolution, too. I will make sure you have all the information, and, because it is a week from Saturday, so I've been told it's the 14th?
14.
It's the 14th.
That's fabulous, and as I told my friend, the mayor of Boston, Marty Walsh, I said, "You got off easy, you're Irish." See, I'm British. It only took my relatives 400 years to go from an hour south of Boston to an hour north of Boston. It only took 400 years. But thank you very much for all this wonderful work, and would anybody else want to share a message, or? We're wonderful. Okay, I think we can get a picture, and please, please take that.
Thank you.
There.
One, two.
Thank you very much. Yeah, no peaks, and you know how to, you have my contact information. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Okay, well, we have our very special guest with us this evening, Senator Kathleen Pasadoma. We'd like to ask her to please come forward and catch us up on everything, and we're just so very glad that you're here. Committee week starts in September, and session starts in January, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for inviting me, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm really glad to be here today, because, as you know, the legislative delegation hearing for Lee County is coming up. For some reason, the caire is on the same day, so Senator Benacristo is going to represent the Senate in the Lee hearing, and I'll be representing the Senate in the caire. So what I would like to ask you all to do is, and I don't know if you have come up with your legislative priorities yet, but I'd like to hear from you all personally, because I won't hear it at the meeting, you know, and if you haven't done it yet, I'll come back, or you can get it to me, or, of course, I talk to you all the time on the phone.
And you're not bad on text, either.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm getting pretty good at it.
No typos.
I do the emojis a lot. I've got, you know, a couple of cute ones that my kids are always making fun of me of, but we are going to be early this year. So the committee week starts September 17, and session starts the first week in January, so we're not going to have a whole lot of time, you know, going through the budget, and those, the budget hearings are going to start early. I know, last year, we were disappointed that we were not able to get the Imperial River budget item funded. We're going to try again this year, I hope. I do want to tell you that I had a conversation with Senator Bradley, who's the Senate Appropriations Chair, and he said, "You know, we don't have a whole lot of fat in the budget this year. We kind of cut out a lot of it last year to do what we needed to do." They anticipate a lower, I'm not sure why, I always thought the economy was doing better, but they don't anticipate the kind of revenue we had last year, so I don't know what's going to happen with projects, but I think that you're on the right track with your water projects, because that's a priority of the governor, and certainly a priority of all of us in southwest Florida. So if there are any other things that you want me to push for, you know, I'm there for you.
No, that's great. That's wonderful, and Counsel, what's your, yeah, let's start down here. Amy?
I think Arlene can, we have a list, because we've already reviewed this, so we can share that with you, if you want to announce it out loud, or just --
Yeah, you want to do that now?
It'd be good. We could, but we're --
Sure, you have approximately eight items as general legislative priorities, and then we'll move forward, and then we have our one funding request. We've continued the same concept in form, maybe giving it more broad of the general area, but mostly stormwater, but also to continue the potential of the buyout program that we're working, that would be an add-on that we've talked about, but --
And thank you, by the way, for that, because we got an additional 60 days, and then because of the hurricane, was there additional time added to that? Because of the hurricane? Okay, that made --
We haven't done it yet, but it's a possibility. I think the 60 days gives you a nice window of opportunity, and if you have any more issues, just let me know.
Sure.
And then I can call Director Lawson. He was, he was great with it, because, you know, nobody's really applied for the funds, we don't want it to go away, and this is a perfect opportunity for Bonita.
Now, thank you very, very much for that, and residents, we've had a nice participation of paperwork, so --
77 applicants.
We're up to 77 applicants.
Really?
And the pool that we're talking about is less than 200, correct?
In terms of homes?
Yes.
It's around there, approximately 200.
Approximately 277 people have already --
Owner-occupied homes.
Right, yes.
Yeah, because of the criteria, absolutely. So what else you got there?
Yeah, what else you got in the menu over there, right?
The City of Bonita Springs supports funding for flooding reduction mitigation projects within our municipal boundaries. The City of Bonita Springs supports state sustainable initiatives, especially those which would prevent discharges from Lake Okeechobee and which promote clean, fresh, and saltwater bodies. The city also proposes any water quality proposals that would negatively impact our city. The City of Bonita Springs supports flooding reduction mitigation projects within our municipality and improvements to overall water quality. The City of Bonita Springs supports state funding for projects which would advance, enhance transportation connectivity for pedestrian and bicycle, bicycles, as well as design and construction for additional complete streets. The City of Bonita Springs believes in affordable insurance rates for our citizens. Towards that end, the city opposes any action or legislation at any government level that will have an effect of significantly increasing flood insurance rates. The City of Bonita Springs supports efforts to provide state funding for local acquisition of preservation lands, especially in the density reduction groundwater resource, DRGR areas of the city. The City of Bonita Springs opposes any effect to allow fracking in and around the southwest Florida area. The City of Bonita Springs supports legislation that would allow perimutual facilities within counties that have passed referendums to provide slot gaming. And then, in general, the City of Bonita Springs supports increased state funding for education,
I did wanna say one thing, uh, and I know you've got a long agenda, but I'm very excited about our initiative with the three roadways, uh, one of which being the Heartland Parkway, that I, I have been, um, talking about since 2010. And what's so important about the Heartland Parkway? And I think it's really, um, critical that we get the message out to the public. Now, that is the roadway that would go from somewhere in Collier County up through the middle of the state, all the way to the Polk Parkway. So it, it, it would help with the traffic congestion on I-75 that we have. But how important that is, hurricane evacuation routes, we need another one because right now, when you look at 75, 95, and the turnpike, it becomes parking lots. Secondly, we need broadband access to the center of the state, even though Bonita's got everything you need, but when we've got rural.
Yes and no.
Well, in that regard.
As, right, two years ago, we found that out the hard way, but.
That's right.
Primarily yes, but not absolutely yes.
And we, you know, those kinda things are gonna be important for the center of the state, which is the poorest area in the state. We need to help it develop and grow, uh, so that they can become economically sustainable. But, and most importantly, what I love about that Parkway, what I really think we need to focus on is building a bike path along it. My dream is that's, that someone can ride a bicycle from Collier County, Lee County, to Orlando and along that route. And I think, uh, there's a lot of concern being expressed by the environmental community that the, the three roadways we're talking about are, you know, not environmentally, um, the right thing to do for the state. My response is that we will not do anything that would hurt our environment. And road building has become, uh, the technology has changed to a great de, a great deal so that whatever we do will be done, um, in a, in a, in a environmentally sustainable manner. But I think it's important for those of us who are way down here in the south to be able to get to the north and to have another, uh, route is critical. So, you know, let's keep an eye on that. And it would be a toll road, so this would not be a burden on the taxpayer. We have the, we could borrow the money at our AAA bond rating and pay it back through tolls. So I'm very excited about that. And then one other thing, I don't know what's gonna happen with the gaming compact. You know, I have been on the record, uh, supporting the initiatives that the citizens of Bonita have voted for, uh, in terms of the gaming issues with the Bonita Dog Track. Um, I'm not sure where that's gonna go, uh, but I think it's gonna be a, a big issue that we'll discuss this year and I'll, you know, be willing to hear from you how you see that unfolding.
Thank you so much. Amy, did you have something else?
I, I just said that I, we have a long list of legislative priorities, but some of them are general enough that I think they would have traction all over the state. And certainly, anything having to do with water would be one of them. But since you did mention these multimodal kinds of activities along that, uh, third byway, we are talking and trying to engage, uh, powers that be for the Sun Trail, which you probably are familiar with. So we are, I think Bonita has two proposed potential routes. So I don't know if we're gonna need the state at any time, but if, you know, if you, if we are really on board to get those, um, bike and pedestrian paths, I think that would help us. One of them is along the right-of-way for the railroad, so we need a lot, a lot of work there. But I know that there's been a lot of effort by both Bonita and Estero to try to get that moving along. I mean, it's a very long project, but we shouldn't lose sight of that.
I think, I couldn't agree with you more. And I hear from so many of my constituents, you know, I like to say that if I go to a, a function and I say, "How many people in the room are cyclists?", half the people raise their hand. And I'll say, "How many people hate cyclists?", and the other people, the other half raised their hand because of the, of the problems with, uh, drivers, distracted driving, and cyclists. So that if we can provide cyclists with, um, uh, safe alternatives to sharing the road in, in, on a trail system, I think that's a win-win for everybody. And I know, uh, FDOT is looking at that as well. And, you know, it'll just make our, our, our state safer and healthier at the same time.
Zero fatalities.
Exactly. That's, I mean, that's our goal because we have way too many.
Thank you for all that you do.
Well, thank you for being a, a partner in, in everything we do.
Thank you. Amy, Greg?
Yeah, uh, thank you for coming down. Uh, I guess I'm gonna be the, uh, the guy that points out the obvious, like the mayor says every once in a while. I guess my biggest question is, is for three years, I've been on council for four years now, for three years I've been going up to Tallahassee asking for things. Things that are near and dear to Bonita Springs, things that we've needed to hear in Bonita Springs, third hardest hit in the, in the state of Florida when it come to it. And granted, we know that Stoneman Douglas happened and Parkland got, it got shifted from Hurricane Herman to Parkland, which they deserve all they, that they got from the Senate. But you know what? We're still suffering here three years later. And what, and I've asked every year, either from you or from other representatives or other senators, what can we do to help support you so we get our needs and wants fulfilled? You know, you, you were part of the senior leadership of that. And when you don't get it fulfilled, that, that speaks volumes to me. If we need to go see Senator Bradley, or we need to go see Senator X, Y, and Z, or we need to go see, you know, the Speaker or, or the leadership, we're not afraid to take it on the road. We, we go up every year with Ashley and with, uh, with Carol and, and we walk the halls, but we walk the halls to people here locally. And, and obviously, the last three years, that's not working. We need to go to you and to the, to the House of Representatives to say, "Who else can we talk to?" So they're not just hearing it from Senator Pasadomo, or they're not hearing, hearing it from Representative Rodriguez. They're hearing it from Senator Bradley from wherever or from whoever. We need that from you. I mean, we, we're asking you for help. We're asking for help back to say, "Where can else can we go?" We just don't want it to be a local issue. Water is a statewide issue. Water for us, since it's coming down from, you know, north of Estero or even from the center of state, it can be an Okeechobee problem also, which if we gotta go talk to the people in Okeechobee or the representatives, we're not afraid to do that. I know the mayor, myself, Councilman Forbes, Mr. O'Flin, everybody here will go talk to somebody if we need to, if we think it's gonna work. Uh, I just, that's my biggest hurdle or my biggest knock is that we've been up there. I know I've been up there numerous times over the last three years and it just seems like brick wall after brick wall. And I know you're doing your part and with you being senior leadership and last year with, uh, with Representative Caldwell being senior leadership, and now we got, uh, uh, Mr. Rodriguez on air, Representative Rodriguez, you know, it's just, it just seems like we keep asking and keep asking and getting nothing and nothing, nothing. And I just keep going back to, I mean, we did thumb drives, we did presentations at the, at the committees, third hardest hit, I hate to keep saying it, and we got nothing. Not, not one skinny dime. And it's just, you know, and we keep paying our taxes every year to the people in Tallahassee and, and to the county and still getting nothing. And we go to the local delegation at the, you know, coming up in October, and last year it was in January, and we get nothing. Just tell us what else we gotta do. If we gotta go to a local delegation in Sarasota, I'm sure the mayor, myself, any of us will take time off and do it. So we just, just help us out. Or tell Carol and Ashley, you know, point them in it, or, or Arlene, or as you say, you text the mayor, call, call somebody. I mean, we just, you know, with everything that you hear, we're, we're dealing with stormwater management, and so we just need some other help if we can. Please.
And I, you know, I understand your frustration because I was, I'm as frustrated as you are. And it's, it's hard to, you know, it's hard to pinpoint how, you know, people talk about budgets like making Swiss cheese or sausage or whatever and, um, how many projects get funded? There were a lot of water projects. Um, I thought this was the year for Bonita. It, you know, I was right there and boom, it was gone. But it, we'll get there. I, I'm pretty confident we'll get there. And I, you know, Rep. Rodriguez and I have talked about it and we're both concerned about it. And it's like everything, you just don't know. It's, nothing's a given. I mean, I, I heard comments, "Well, Bonita, they're a rich city, they don't need it", you know?
We hear it too.
Yeah.
So, and, and, you know, there'll be.
Yes, we did. We did, yes, I'm not even, yes.
I heard that a lot. Um, and I'll tell you that, you know, the City of Naples has never had a budget item ever in the history, and they're a lot, you know, a lot older. Uh, they were, they were funded for sewer, uh, funding because there was a pot of sewer money available. So the problem is you don't know where the funds are going to be available when you file your budget request. And we don't know either because it's all an allocation that are agreed upon between the House and the Senate. So they just happen to have the money there and the city, just like, we just happen to have some money here on the buyout. And Bonita's the only one that's looking for it. And so it's really looking good that Bonita is gonna get some of that funding. So that's not a.
No, and I understand. I guess my thing is, is doing, you know, jobs around, in my lifetime, it's just, my thing is if we go talk to enough people and then sooner or later, they start regurgitating what we're saying. Not only is it Senator Pasadomo saying, "Yeah, Bonita may be rich, but we've got one of the lowest millages out there. We're not taxing our people to death. We're, we're looking for help somewhere else." And then if Senator Bradley says that, then if Senator, you know, Richter gets back in this game some other time and he says it, you know, I mean, that's how long we've been going up there.
Best off Richter, we can do.
Well, that's what I mean. That's how long we, I've been going up there.
Right.
And wanting these, and asking these ass, you know? And, you know, if, uh.
Yeah, and it's gonna be a tighter budget year. And I'm not sure where, where we're gonna go. And, you know, I know, you've all done the right things. You've got good consultants that are helping you. Um, in fact, Carol was driving me crazy. I think she was in my office more than I was. Um, so we, let's continue to work together. You're, you're not doing anything wrong. It's just happening to be in the, sort of the right place at the right time, the right budget silo with the right dollars available. And, you know, we'll get there.
All right. Thank you for coming down. I appreciate it and all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura?
Yeah, it's always a pleasure to see you and to hear from you. And appreciate all your efforts and what you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Mike?
Thanks for coming down.
Fred?
Uh-oh.
Yeah, Fred. Well, now you're in trouble.
Yeah, I know.
Fred!
No, no, I, I, actually, water's gonna be big because I know the Florida Lake of Cities, that's one of their big legislative asks. They, they wanna have a inventory of how much the grand total money we need to spend on water. And we're not really spending as much on water as we should've. To bore you with a little statistic, it came out in the meeting, remember how we're boasting about how much we've got? And DeSantis did a great job in the legislature? We're actually spending the same amount of money with about a, what, a $98 billion budget that state spent in 2005 with a 2, with a $25 billion budget. So, and that's not your fault, that's just a, a sign of the times, I guess.
Yeah, just, one thing that I'd like to point out too is when you look at our state budget, um, fully 43% of our state budget is healthcare. Forty-three percent. Twenty-seven percent is education, pre-K through 12 and higher ed. So that doesn't leave a whole lot for the rest of, um, our spending initiatives. So with that, uh, leftover dollars, we have all the water projects, public safety, operation of government, transportation. Uh, one of the most underfunded areas of our state budget that, that troubles me greatly is our corrections. They are, they haven't received additional dollars in as long as I've been in the legislature. People, you know, so we have our prisons with populations that, and not enough people take care of them. So, um, the reality is, we are trying to do a lot with, even though we may have an increase in dollars, so do the costs increase. And I know that we have not spent the kind of dollars we knew, needed to on water. The, the question is, and the hard job that we have is, where do we take it from? And how do we, you know, how do, we do have some, I believe we have some fat in the budget. We probably have some projects that we're funding that we shouldn't, but we need to go through them. Um, so I, yeah, and I know, I know you probably, you wanna get rid of me, right?
No, no, heck no. You kidding me? We're getting ready to pin you down.
I was gonna ask one other thing. Perhaps Ashley and Carol could put together a, because I think Greg had a great idea, a list of other people that we need to talk to when we're on these trips, other than our delegation, because we, most of them know us anyway.
Right. Well, that's a good point.
And, and perhaps they could put it together and show it to you and Ray, and you could add to it or take some off, because we wanna go to the ones that we can hit pay dirt with, so to speak.
Right. Yeah. Now, thank, thank you, Fred. And I, and I guess I would add, you know, kind of, uh, thank you very much for being here. Thanks for all you're doing. I know, obviously, how serious you take this and how powerful you are up in Tallahassee now and more power to come. But that's given through leadership and trust and respect, and you're very well thought of. And we're blessed to have you as our state senator. And as you know, um, we do come up to Tallahassee and I, I think you know that I have a daughter that is brand new to Florida State University.
Oh, gosh, we'll see him.
And I have a four-cylinder car out there that gets pretty good gas. But dovetailing on what we said, please, if we need to go to Jacksonville, if we need to go to Pensacola this fall to visit with members that you don't, you know, like you say, you go to Tallahassee, you, you shuffle through the offices and I've called it in a way, and respectfully, but it's almost like speed dating, right? You, you come in.
That's what we call.
Everything's pre-arranged, everybody knows who's gonna be there. You come in, you say your piece, and then you move along. But I say it to say that we, we can certainly travel around the state. We're very willing to do that. And if, the one, the one ask I would have of you, if you could work with Ashley and Carol on that list, trust me, we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get her done. We really will. And thank you very much for being here. Thank you for everything and, uh, we're blessed to call you our state senator. So thank you.
And thanks for the, the partnership because you guys are great to represent. I, I've always said that. You don't throw us under the bus all the time like some people, which is really nice.
No, no, no. We, we look you in the eye and give your concerns like Greg, and, and I look you in the eye and say, "Give me a list, give me a work list. Give me a to-do list and we'll get it done."
Hey, you got it.
Okay? And, and I know Arlene had something, and then if we can do a picture before you leave with council, that would be great.
We just wanted to clarify that the, that the city has voted on their, their number-one funding request is the same, is the same amount, the $750,000 to target the area of Bonita Estates, Quinn Downs, Dean Street. And, um, we're working on, um, calculating that we've, the city has also done additional investments as well, and we're approximate a 43 to 45% match, but we're still working on that information.
That will be very helpful, the match, for sure.
So, but, um, and then we're looking at.
Very good point, I'm, yeah.
Alternatives in the, in that, in that area. So we wanted to let you know, we're still working on putting together, because the, the city has put additional investments in since last legislative session, but we're still targeting projects within that number-one priority area.
Right. The, the matching is very helpful, because that's the number, that's the first thing they ask, what's the match?
Before they even say, "Okay, what city? Is the match there? Okay, what city?"
Yeah, that's absolutely true. All right.
Counsel, anything else for the senator?
No.
Great. Please come forward.
but we're still targeting projects within that number-one priority area.
Right. The matching is very helpful, because that's the first thing they ask. What's the match?
Before they even say, okay, what city? Is the match there? Okay, what city?
Yeah, that's absolutely true. All right.
Counsel, anything else for the senator? Great. Please come forward. We can do a picture, and you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go enjoy your dinner, or your evening, or the next three events you have to go to.
Yeah. You're working with Becky, right?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, we're down here?
Down in the mosh pit. And thank you, Ashley. I'm anticipating that list, so thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
I can tell it right now.
Yeah, right. You already know the list, right?
Right.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here, Ashley. Give our best to Carol. Thank you, Senator. Okay, we're gonna move on now to item C, which is receive a presentation from Kimley Horn and Associates for Logan Boulevard landscaping project, and this is green sheet 1909-265. Welcome.
Hello. Just give a brief introduction. We have Ed Dean here from Kimley Horn and Associates, and they're gonna go through a video presentation of the 100% plan for Logan Boulevard, show you what it will look like when we go out to bid for the project. We're basically at that point. I'm gonna rewind the video here real quick so you can see.
Okay.
You got one of your cards?
Yes, I do.
No kibitzing from the dais.
Well, good evening, Mayor, counsel. I appreciate you having me here tonight. As he spoke, you know, we are at final design for this project, so really just wanted to give you an update just on really what this is gonna look like. And so, we use a lot of 3D software. And we're gonna play the video here in a minute, but just to give you a little context of where we're coming from, this would be coming, starting at Bonita Beach Road, heading east toward the new roundabout at Logan Boulevard, and then ultimately heading south down Logan Boulevard. Then we'll do a 180 and kinda come back up the road here at the end of this video. You can go ahead and play if you'd like. But what you'll see here is, you know, a key focal point for this project is the roundabout itself. We have a lot of specimen palms in there, very large and mature at installation. And as we turn here now and start driving down actual Logan Boulevard, one of the things that we were really challenged with is we've got this one-mile straight segment. And how do you break that up visually so that you get this corridor that isn't, just feel like this monotonous straight one-mile piece? And so, you'll see a lot of variations in kind of the rhythm with the materials that we're proposing. And you'll see here a lot of, you know, seasonal color. What we're showing in this rendering kind of represents maybe the different interests that you'll get throughout the year. While this video maybe represents all of that, you'll see that kind of pop throughout the different seasons itself. You also will see on the, to the right of the graphic here, which would be on the west side of Logan Boulevard, the trail there. And so, one of the things that we really wanted to make sure we did is we provided trees on both sides of that trail so that we would give, you know, somebody who's out there using this sidewalk some shade. You know, it's very hot. And so, to be able to get trees on both sides of that sidewalk were very important. And we've got some existing utilities, as you'll see there with those power lines, so it meant, you know, the utilization of some palms there. And then as we get here to the end, you know, this is really a gateway as you're entering from the south. You'll see, again, a lot of specimen palms there, kinda creating this entry as you come in that you're seeing here now. And just to kinda give you that overview, again, you can see that sidewalk and how those trees kind of jump on either side. And we're really looking at, you know, how do you create a rhythm down this corridor that, you know, while it is a straight corridor, it might encourage people to slow down a little bit. You know, putting some side friction, as we like to say, with some vegetation up adjacent to the road helps calm the road a little bit.
I noticed you're mixing some New England colors, like fall foliage. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
You got trees that'll look like fall foliage?
Well, I wouldn't say it's fall foliage.
It's all yellow in there.
Yeah, and that's actually, those are tababuya, so that's actually a flower. So, those in the springtime will pop, a very vibrant, bright yellow, and the pink. But as you saw there at the roundabout, again, that's really one of the focal points for this project, is to really provide some landscaping there that really does make a true statement for that roundabout itself.
Right. Is that it?
That's all I got.
Counsel, what are your thoughts? Amy?
You did a great job. I really, first of all, I like this mechanism by which you can give us a visual here. And I think, I understand the concept of what you're trying to advance, and I think you accomplished that. And I think it's really good to have those different feelings as you go down a very straight road, which is probably the nightmare for a landscape architect, I think, to do that, because you don't have any natural features to make it interesting. And you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Greg?
No, Greg, presentation. Hope it gets done.
Great. Thank you so much. Laura?
Good presentation. Thank you.
Mike?
Looks good.
Fred?
Outstanding.
Okay, great. Let me know if there's any more fall foliage colors. I'd have to look at that scan once again.
All right.
Any oranges or crimson reds, or whatever those colors are?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Great. Matt, Arlene?
No maize.
Maize and blue. Did you see those rankings this week?
The next steps, I just wanted to kinda touch base. So, these guys have wrapped up their plans. One key thing that we didn't really touch on is, there is a partnership with Village Walk. This project has been a partnership with Village Walk all along. And so, there is landscaping that will also, it's shown in the video, we didn't point it out, but that's along their wall, so that, you know, we'll be including that in the project as well. But really, next steps is, we'll be developing the bid package here in the week, and putting this thing out to bid and trying to get construction started prior to construction wrapping up, which is gonna be a bit of a challenge for us, because the construction's going pretty well. But that's where we are, and hopefully, we'll be back to you with some apparent low bids here within about a month and a half. One other thing I wanted to point out is the lighting, the infrastructure is in the ground to be able to, conduits to pole lighting, but that is not part of this scope of work. So, they designed the landscape for lighting spacing in the Center Islands, but that will not be what we'll be installing here. We're gonna take it a little slower and wait-and-see approach on street lighting for that corridor.
Okay. And you know me, I'm not, and I'm not trying to be funny, but is any of that bureaucratic, or is that strategic?
No, it's strategic. It's a corridor that hasn't been lit. It is close to homes. The streetlight committee took a look at it and really recommended to, you know, lay the best groundwork we can, which we have. There's conduits all over the place for future lighting, but to see after the road opens whether, you know, that there is a pent-up demand or not. There will be lighting, though, for safety reasons, right at the roundabout approach itself.
Great. Wonderful. Counsel, anything else? Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here. We're gonna move on now to mayor and council member items. Item A is the discussion on stormwater utility. I introduced this, and this is green sheet 1909-273, and I'll just read background. On July 17, 2019, city council adopted ordinance 19-05, creating a stormwater utility and collection method. On September 9, 2019, city council will be discussing the adoption of a stormwater utility fee. And as much as anything, because this was the only council meeting prior to those meetings, I just wanted to kinda get an update on where we are with things. And did you have some information, Arlene?
Well, additionally, so you had said that you want an opportunity for the public to have one more.
Yeah, certainly. Right, absolutely.
As you know, this is a policy decision of the city council. It asked us to provide you with some additional information. And to clarify, yes, the operational items that were discussed in the portion of the stormwater utility, we have placed that in the upcoming budget as well that's coming forward to you. But there was an additional approximately $500,000 or so that was looked at as additional for capital improvement projects that you were looking at. So, that was one of the questions that was referred to. So, the proposed operating budget does include those items that were brought forward to you as the discussion as whether or not to move forward with the stormwater utility. It was mentioned in the 10-year plan, and I'll have Matt clarify this, but in the 10-year plan, you have approximately $28 million. Is that correct, in 10 years?
In the current proposed CIP, you have about $28 million for, you know, various stormwater-related projects.
It is, it was mentioned. There's two portions to this mechanism. First is, is that you all have adopted the actual mechanism of stormwater utility. What you have not adopted is the fee. The fee is what you'll be discussing on September 9. The mechanism of actually creating the utility does provide you opportunity for looking at special areas that you may want to impose a fee on in the future. That's not part of the discussion on the 9th. The 9th is a discussion of a citywide fee that you would be looking at. Letters were sent out to every property owner within the city, explaining what the potential rates could be depending on the type of property owner they were. As of a few days ago, there was some discussion with our consultants, DanTech, about questions that were received about individual lots that are owned by mobile home, that have a mobile home on them. So, on Monday, they'll be bringing a proposed adjustment as well. As you know, condos were at the point, were at a point, I'll let Matt explain, the ERUs, the equivalent rates.
So, every ERU was based on 4,500-square-foot home, single-family home, and other, commercial was based on actual. And so, with condominiums, you know, a rate, a reduction rate, because they're not, you know, all of that size of 40% was applied. And I think the recommendation that they'll be bringing forward is somewhere around 60% for individually-owned mobile home lots to address the concerns. I think someone spoke about it here earlier this morning, or this afternoon.
So, they'll be bringing an adjustment to you on the 9th for that rate?
For consideration.
For consideration.
Okay. Fred, do you have something?
Well, I would like to have somebody say, what is the taxes in Naples? And what is the taxes in Astero, the tax rate? Because I think public comment was saying that we're high, and I think we're lower than both those, aren't we?
Not Astero.
Are you, just the advalor, or you're talking about the stormwater utility?
I'm talking about advalorem.
Advalorem?
Yeah.
We can, I was gonna say, and we can certainly have that information, or somebody could look it up quickly before, you know, we can talk about it tonight, or certainly at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm looking it up right now, if you guys wanna keep.
Yeah, but I think you were mentioning, I think it was Wyatt, the gentleman, I didn't catch his last name, but he said that Naples was around $200.
Well, that was further.
For the stormwater.
For the stormwater utility.
The fee, yeah.
Is that what he's talking about?
No? Is that what you're talking about?
I think Councilman.
No, no, no. I heard two things. I heard one guy get up and say that small businesses were being taxed so much more in Benita than other places, and I wanted to know, how does it compare? Because he specifically was talking about Astero and Naples, I thought. But I know our.
The city of Naples millage rate is 1.1800.
Okay.
One, say it again? 1.1800. And we're .8. .83. 8173, I think.
8173.
And what's Astero?
Their website's slower than ours.
How are commercial properties, are they still a regular property tax? Like, whatever they're appraised, how do we tax commercial properties?
Like, they're appraised?
Just their appraised value?
Appraised value.
For advalorem.
Advalorem, the rules regarding advalorem are set by the state. So, it just applies, and then there's appraisal criteria varieties. Usually, the homes and the home-owned exceptions and stuff that sort of skews that number in favor of single-family dwellings.
Right. So, for example, we kept our millage rate the same for the seventh consecutive year, but the property values went up. So, that's, you know, $700,000 or $800,000 that we got additionally by keeping our millage rate where it is. And, you know, this mechanism here, which I expressed some concerns on initially, the question is not whether we need stormwater and attention, paying attention to stormwater. It's the mechanism of how we pay for it. And we can apply a new tax, or a fee, or whatever we wanna call it, on our citizens, or we can look at paying for it ourself. And when we pay for it ourself, we're looking for about $1 million and a half, is my understanding. And I'll, you know, we can drill down on the numbers tonight, or more than anything, I wanted to get an update on where we were. I know we, like, somebody mentioned some FEMA money has come in. Is, that's correct, right?
Correct.
That was received a couple weeks back.
Yes, yes. We brought it back to you.
And what was that amount, Arlene, or was it a few different checks, or?
Yes, the total we've received to date is $7.2 million in reimbursements.
$7.2?
Total, that's a total of what we received.
We've been reimbursed? That was up from three not too long ago.
Well, if you remember, three was the last check that we received. We previously had another check for one and a half that we brought before that, and another million. So, the total received of all the amendments that you've had is $7.2 million. As of, the three, the $3 million that we just got a couple meetings ago brought us to the $7.2.
And so, we roughly were out eight plus.
Yes.
And we've received seven-plus million back.
Correct.
And, but when we were out the eight, we had spent more than the eight to be out the eight, because we spent some money we had to spend because of IRMA that was either not reimbursable, or that percentage kept growing from the 100% to, what was it, 90, and then it got to a different. So, how much did we really spend because of IRMA, roughly?
I'm gonna ask Ann Wright to come forward to see.
Hello, Ann.
After the reimbursement, Ann Wright, Finance Director, after the reimbursements that we anticipate, it's gonna be close, a little over $700,000.
Another $700,000?
No, yeah, yeah, that will be the share that we won't be reimbursed for.
Oh.
So, in total, $8.2 million, and we're.
No, I'm not talking about the 10% or 15 or whatever. I'm talking about, we had to spend some money because of IRMA that was not even eligible for FEMA reimbursement. That's what I was always told, that the real cost of IRMA was a whole lot more than what.
What was the total cost that IRMA cost the city?
About $8.3, $8.4 million. But we had very little that was not, that was not, that we did not submit for reimbursement.
Okay, good.
Where did you get $12,000?
I thought we heard at one point.
Yeah, Amy, and then Greg.
I just wanna follow up to a previous question that we brought up, because I just happen to have this, because I've always been curious about this. And if the commercial properties are taxed at their appraised value from the Lee County Tax Authority, we have, if your commercial property is appraised at a million, you're paying the city $817. If you're $2 million, you're paying it, you know, twice that. So, you're paying the city $1,634. And here it says that there are 207 units who are greater than $2 million. All right? And 86% of our taxing units pay less than $350 to the city. 86%. That's a pretty amazing number, I think. This might be a little, I think, this might be a little dated, but I think the percentages are probably correct. So, I would like to have a discussion with, the person's name was Wayne or something, the one that came up and said that we're taxed too much or something. I've forgotten his name, but.
Not last name.
I've forgotten his last name. But I really don't, I don't think that's supported by the facts, is what, my opinion. And maybe we can get some information out. Because if they're only paying us, you know, $1,600 for a commercial property, if their assessment is, you know, appraised value is $2 million, and some of this is our residential, and provided, we got this off the Lee County, I ask for this every time we have the budget. So, I do agree that we have changed some of our, like, our communication tax, so they're paying more that way. Most of the other taxation goes to Lee County, the school district, you know, the mosquito control, you know, whatever, you know, the other line items. But it's, we only pay 5% of their tax bill comes to here. So, I think we should have our community development department respond to that, because I don't think it's correct.
Well, and additionally, the individual is making the point that we keep changing our mind on what to build and what not to build, and then, so it becomes difficult to deal with as a whole. Is it gonna be a tax? Is it gonna be assessment? What's gonna be the limit? And then, you even point out in your discussion of commercial, and then some are residential, commercial, the way that we're going to figure out how much a person has to pay is absurdly complicated. And I really like the rule of just keep it simple. I mean, because it becomes like, what if I then say, well, I just tore up my driveway, come out and reassess me? It becomes really crazy, the way, you know, you're going to tell people, because right now, a lot of people are very confused. I got so many emails that just didn't grasp what we're talking about as the stormwater management fee assessment. So, I think it'd be helpful if we give, you know, just encapsulate exactly what it is so that people understand it.
Preach into the choir. Amen.
But isn't that the purpose of the public hearing that we're having on the 9th, to describe this?
But if we could, if we could define it now, so that.
We already, it is defined. I think if you look at the, you know, the notice, it tells you exactly how it goes. That's why it's, if you're a single family, it's $50. If you're, you know, a multiple family, you take 40% of that, which will give you whatever that is. I mean, there's nothing more, I mean, it's one line, basically. So, but maybe we haven't done a good job about communicating it. But I think our multiple public hearings and discussions from our consultant, it is definitely a user fee. It is definitely asking for additional funds to come from property owners. So, we can't change that. But I do think that if there is confusion, you know, we need to communicate more. But I don't think, I don't see how it's confusing. Maybe it's all the words that are in addition to this.
I'm just saying, the emails that I've received are just, I mean, people think it's one, a tax, and I think it is also, but, and two, that it's just $50. It's just gonna be $50. And that is not the case.
Well, it's the case for this year.
It's the case for this year.
But you could say that about the taxes every, every year. The tax, our millage is just 18, or 81, 73. You know, next year, it could be 98. Could be whatever, because I know when Councilman Gibson brought it up, and we started talking about this at the budget hearings, we were gonna go up 10%, 20%. We're gonna go above a dollar to fund these things. And we decided not to. My only question is, is kinda back to Matt a little bit, and a little bit to Arlene, and probably Ann, well, there you are, still there. Two things. One, you showed, you made a comment, Matt, that we have $28 million in the CIP over the next 10 years, five years?
10 years.
10 years. Does it, what does it allocate as a funding mechanism? A stormwater assessment, or is it done by advalorem, or it has no funding mechanism whatsoever? It's just what we'd like to have?
Excuse me. It runs, it does not identify a.
It runs, it does not identify a stormwater utility as a funding mechanism.
Okay.
It does have multiple sources identified. Some of them are general fund, some of them are grant proceeds from the hazard mitigation grants that we've applied through FEMA, and some of them are assumptions even from the state legislature in terms of appropriation. So it's, it's variable funding sources. The one funding source that is not contemplated is your stormwater utility.
Yeah, if you recall, the last budget meeting, we were asked to reinstate the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we didn't receive the last fiscal year. And then, you know, there's approximately nine million, or a billion, nine million nine hundred from the anticipation of local mitigation strategy funding, grants, grant applications that we apply for.
And just for the record, the proposed STERO millage rate, which we, I think, vote on next week, is zero point seven six three mils. They're just under us.
My next question, it's kind of towards Arlene and Ann. If this, on when, or on Monday, the ninth, if the stormwater assessment, we decide not to fund it, fund that fee, where would we get those funds in the budget? Would they come from the seven point two million, or from unassigned fund balances? We'd have to transfer into those projects that we would need to do, whether it be maintenance or any type of capital projects for the next fiscal year?
And Greg, not, you're very good on the mic, but I do see some, somebody on the mic.
Sorry.
Yeah.
My bad.
No, that's okay, just so everybody can hear nice and clear. I don't have that problem.
I usually don't have a problem with pronunciation.
No, I know you don't, yeah, I know you don't, buddy, but thank you.
So the current operational standard that you have to date, the, this, keeping in the same year to year, as, as we proposed to you during the budget process, we talked about basically the cost of continuing services, so not doing anything additional. We have that covered in this fiscal year, in the current proposed budget that you're receiving the money, without implementing the stormwater utility. What, what the consultants had done was captured what we spend annually for operational costs, maintenance costs.
Correct.
And then, and, and estimate of approximately five hundred thousand to be banked towards capital projects. So the accounting of the operational cost and maintenance, we planned on, in the proposed budget that we have coming forward to you, without the stormwater utility implemented. So you would be looking at the, the addition of that, if you were to approve the stormwater utility.
Greg?
That's it for right now.
Laura?
No.
No? Fred?
Would it be fair to say that if we go ahead with what's proposed on that assessment, new tax, whatever, that we would be able for a change to do some serious projects every year in addition to the normal maintenance and smaller projects we've been doing in the, for the million and a half?
It would be dedicated, they would have to be used for that, so there probably are additional projects at some point we'd wanna bring forward to you.
Right.
To utilize.
It wouldn't be necessarily limited to fun flooding, it could be water quality improvements that we are under mandate for, or acquiring a piece of property, do a water project on all that.
Okay. Amy?
Just a question. The, the way I understand that it would work is that, I mean, this year you have identified operational maintenance as one aspect to it, and five hundred thousand for potential capital improvements that we don't really have identified, but we.
In general, they could be used in any of the.
They can use in any of those things that we already did. So in the future, as we look at some of these alternatives, we could decide, I mean, we ought, we, we would need to decide on an annual basis whether we're gonna do a project which would require, especially a capital project, which would require immediate funding. And it could include, like, for example, if we get some success at, at the state where we're required to have state match, matching funds, we could use some of this water, this fee, to provide those matching funds. And, and again, my understanding is that one of the reasons why this would be helpful is that when we go to the state or to other entities where we're asking for participation, one of the things they look at is whether you can deliver on your promise for participation. And this would be, in some ways, an ideal mechanism to provide that assurance, because it's a dedicated funding mechanism, mechanism for a specific purpose. It doesn't go into the general fund, and you can pay, you spend it for everything. We could do it through Ad Valorem taxes, but of course, that would be more, I think it'd be difficult to do, because we'd have to raise our tax rate so much higher, because these projects, as we know, looking at, you know, Beaver's Report, what do we have, ten different projects? There's not one of them that's less than five million dollars. So there's, there's, there's a lot of things that I think the city will be looking at to mitigate a problem that we have here.
From what we understand from Stan Tech, having the dedicated revenue source is a potential for different, additional points within certain grant applications. I'm not, the specific application, but I'm, that's what I.
Each one would be different. But each year, if we said we only want to spend five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, then our fee, you know, could be the same every single year.
Correct, you have the right to, so the letter that was addressed to the residents was that the max that you'd be looking at is the fifty, then?
But honestly, it probably won't go down because of these other issues, which we talk about all the time, and our, our commitment to working on stormwater management. So if we're gonna be honest, I can't see it going down or becoming zero, once we go down that path.
And I guess my point would be is, look, we've been, we've held firm on the millage. We've held firm on the millage. We have not increased the millage. Yet, by not increasing the millage, our property values are going up, so we've generated extra money. We've been reimbursed to the tune of about eighty percent from FEMA or so. We're not flat on our backs financially, like we were. We're, we're certainly by no means very, very comfortable. There's always more money in the rainy day fund to be had, where people have a comfort level. But I indicated this a few weeks back, when we discussed this, I absolutely am one hundred percent committed to creating stormwater program, but I absolutely am also one hundred percent against charging our citizens to do it. We have the money, and that's where I'm coming from. Mike, do you have anything to add? You've been kind of quiet.
Well, I, I mean, I've said it multiple times, I'm against creating a new tax, but it's already been created. I don't think it's the fairest way to go. I, I'm, the Ad Valorem, the millage rate is based on property value for a reason, and there's protections in there for people that, you know, the homesteaded, save our homes. So it doesn't allow such a large increase on people with smaller houses, mobile homes. And they're, they're the ones that, you know, are gonna have the most difficult time paying this fifty dollars. Most of them are on fixed incomes. You know, the one property that I've looked at multiple times, it's a tiny house, it's a one-bedroom house. They're, they're basing this on forty-five hundred square foot of impervious land. I know she doesn't have that. So why are we still charging her fifty dollars, you know, for, because the average, you know, house is forty-five hundred square foot impervious? So she's far below that. And this is, I, I think currently she pays, it's less than fifty dollars to the city in, in taxes. So it's more than doubling what she's paying to the city. So I mean, yeah, you can say it's only fifty dollars, but it's more than doubling what she's paying. And yet, the city's only five percent of the total. You know, that business analogy that you gave of them paying six, sixteen hundred, yeah, that, that's only five percent. They're, they're paying, you know, ninety-five percent more to other agencies. So I mean, it, it's a tiny amount to the city, but when they get their tax bill, they see the big tax, they, the total. So it's, it's, it's big numbers. So I'm not supportive of doing this at all, so, that's where I am.
And, and, no, I was just gonna say, real quick, Greg, because Mike, you, you triggered something that, that, that made me, Greg, go ahead, I'll come back to it.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I don't disagree with, with your analogy, anybody's analogy on this, but in the past, we haven't raised the millage to do these projects. I think this gives us the funding mechanism to do these future projects. I guess that's why I'm so for it, because this board and passports have failed to either want to raise the millage, either politically or socially or whatever, to do these projects that we need. We, in the, and some of it could be our fault for not raising it, some of it could be our fault for not going up and fighting hard enough to get it from the state, but those things haven't happened, and, and, and that's where I'm feeling, or that's where I'm feeling compelled, that here we are, third hardest hit, like I said, to Senator Pasadoma, and over three years, two budget years, we've failed to raise the millage to do certain projects. Now, whether it's politically or what we feel, I know we got more money, but, you know, we got more money going out, too, on doing things. As Kathleen said, I don't think in our budget, there's a lot of fat. So it's not like that we are, you know, have a lot of money, have a lot of money to spend, or we can cut it and, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul to do these projects. This is just another funding mechanism to get it to us. If we were open to raising the millage by whatever, point one, point two, to, like, like Mike wanted to do at the, at one of the workshop, budget workshop, then I would, you know, I'd vote against this, but we haven't demonstrated that, which is, you know, in some aspects is good. We haven't been charging our constituents to the, to the hilt. But on the second part of it is, is since, you know, Irma came through in two thousand and seventeen, we've done just enough to get by. We haven't done anything extra. And that's where I feel that this stormwater utility will let us either, A, give the extra, but even if we don't want to give the extra, what it does, in my opinion, is a neighborhood, whether it be a Benita Bay, Pelican Landing, Spanish Wells, or even a, what the?
IBE.
IBE, or, I was thinking of one over there, Lakes of San Sushi. If they want to tax themselves and have more protection, whether it's a bigger berm or, or bigger pipes that they want to put underneath the road, or underneath driveways, they have that mechanism. Right now, they don't. They would have to either go to Public Works at Matt and say, look, we feel that our driveways are collapsing, and, and let's go with, in Benita Springs Country Club, it's been neglected over the years, we need to have these culverts cleaned out. Matt go, the city goes, hey, it's not our, it's private roads, you gotta deal with that. So now they can assess themselves. Prior to doing something like this, they cannot assess themselves. They would have to come here, hat in hand, and say, look, we're flooding in the country club, we need help cleaning the ditches, or putting bigger swells in, or, or creating an ordinance now, instead of when they did it, a twelve-inch pipe underneath your, underneath your driveway is good, we need an eighteen-inch pipe, or a twenty-four-inch pipe, now we're gonna reassess that. That's gonna be a lot more than fifty dollars a year for that, because I just know, when City Sewer came in to all of us, it was twelve, fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars. None of us got to opt out of that. So that, that's all I'm looking at. If we would demonstrate that we would raise the taxes if we need to, I'm not saying do it frivolously, but if we identify certain projects in a CPI in the next year, two, three, and we start raising the tax for it, that's one thing. But we have, I don't think we've demonstrated that, and that just gives us another mechanism to do it. That's my two cents.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Greg. Yeah, no, absolutely, thank you for that. Laura?
Another mechanism would be, let's sell some of the properties downtown and get it rolling, and then we get revenue that way. We made, we, I mean, if you look at Ann Wright's numbers, we, our revenues were greater this year, our expenditures, well, with the, you know, taking out Irma, were, were also less. So we made more money, we spent less, and if we develop downtown, we'll get more money in, let's sell the bamboo property.
I don't have a problem with that at all, I mean, I, you know, I'm just saying this gives us another mechanism that, that we, we haven't sold it. We, I've been up here four years, and the mayor's been the mayor for almost four years, and we've been talking about selling it, and I haven't seen one for, for sale sign in it yet. So that's all.
Why don't we make that a priority, rather than taxing our citizens?
And, and, and I'll just jump in here, because I've been very clear with Arlene and Matt, they know where I am down there, on downtown. Anything and everything that we need to do to blow through what we need to blow through, I, I'll just use my famous word, bureaucracy, and I don't really know that this is. But what I'm saying is, we're sitting here clearing our throats, and the opera goes on. We need to be singing. Yes, Fred?
Well, I, I'd like to weigh in on the, I think what we ought to do, first of all, a proposal was made in another council meeting to get somebody to come in and evaluate and all that to propose. I, I would propose that we go out within thirty to forty-five days, sixty days max, with an RFP, but we have the right to reject it and see what.
Of course we do.
What the marketplace comes in with, and if it's real good, we're gonna know it. If it's not any good, we can reject it, and we can probably tweak it a little bit, but I think, but I think get DPC's input, but it's not gotta be exactly what they show. These are things we like, but let's see what happens, because we don't know till we try it. It's been tried in the past, but that's, I think the last time was a lot of years ago.
Derek or Arlene, what would we need to do to open up? And then I'll go to Amy, let me just, the RFP process for our properties downtown.
We have an RFP.
Well, we have, we have, for your, your next meeting, we have two things coming. We have the DPC Form Based Code coming with the, you all gave us some comments the last time with the revisions, and as council directed, we found a company that already has a state contract, so we don't have to go to RFP, that does market analysis, and actually has done this for other cities, the city of Jacksonville, Mobile, has had city properties that they've walked through the entire process of an RFP process, and they also do the marketing and analysis for you. So we plan on having that at the next meeting as well.
At the next meeting, and I'd like to propose, and then Amy, I'll go to you, at the next meeting, that we're ready to make a proposal and vote on it. And maybe we wait till the next meeting, but I don't want to wait a lot more meetings and sit here and continue to get warmed up. Amy, go ahead, yes.
I just think, I sort of agree with you, but I, we, we have authorized this company to help us to, through the process, and they're the ones that are gonna guide us so that we do it in a way that's most efficacious for us, and will give us the best results. So I don't think they're gonna be ready to tell us how to proceed, right?
Yes, so that, this coming meeting was the, to bring you all the proposal from them with the layout of how, how it would move forward, that, and they would provide you with the market analysis to tell you the best-case scenario of, you know, what type of units you're looking for, and what the market holds, residential, commercial, what, what you could ask for. And then they have their way of marketing across the country.
That's, that's fabulous, and, and I'm gonna let them know about my marketing, we're coming into season, and we're not gonna be on the sidelines. Amy, go ahead.
I'm just, I, I want to clarify what you're saying, all right? Will they have the market analysis at our next meeting?
No, that's, no, this was to move forward.
This is what they're going to provide, and there'll be some timeframe that'll be recommended to provide this information, so that we can make our decision in a reasonable and best practices way. Is that correct?
Correct, so, correct, yes, they're, they're bringing, this would be the approval of the proposal.
Or we can step up, like we're elected to do, and push this along at our speed.
Yeah.
Not their speed.
That's right.
And that's all this, the last thing I'll say about it. We're in control, not them. I look forward to working with them, but they don't drag this out until next July and say, we're ready. No, we're gonna go into this season with a full head of steam.
I think we could, I think you could do it, and I think we could use that company to help us tweak the proposals that come in, because they might say by market analysis, maybe this tenant should be this kind as suggestions, and see where we go. We can always reject it. It's not gonna cost us very much money to do it, but we at least see where we're at, what the markets, because they're gonna tell you what they think is gonna work. They're not gonna give you something that's gonna be a dog, so to speak.
Counsel, anything else on, that's a dynamite update, thank you so much. So the next meeting on that will be Monday, the ninth, at five oh five? No, the, the time was, okay, I'm so used to, I'm so used to saying five oh five with those, but it is six P M.
Six P M.
Right here. So, thank you, everybody, thank you for the update. Counsel, anything else on this? Okay. We're gonna move on to item nine, which is the first reading of the following zoning ordinances, and there's no public comment on this.
The first is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a Benita Lakes Homeowners Association amending zoning ordinance zero four ten, adding a deviation to allow zero-foot side yard setbacks for mechanical equipment for the Benita Lakes residential plan development located at twenty-five, five eighty Imperial Parkway, Benita Springs, Florida, three four one three five, providing for an effective date. Second one is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, requesting the granting of a variance from section four dash one eight nine four sub B of the Land Development Code, requiring a twenty-five-foot setback from water bodies for an existing structure located at fifty-nine, fifty-one Carroll Street, Benita Springs, Florida, three four one three four, and providing for an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Duitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karumba?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Derek?
I have nothing more on those two items.
Is that it?
It.
I have nothing more on those two items.
Is that it?
It.
You're good? Okay, um, we're going to move on. Let's see, I guess we're down to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time, please come forward.
Did you guys vote, I'm sorry, clarification, you voted on both of those ordinances?
That's what I was saying to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, just making sure, buddy. Thank you. John, please, thank you.
For the record, my name's John Pano, Benita Springs Downtown Alliance President, and I'm representative of CGT Kayaks here in Benita Springs. Greg, just one of the things I wanted to point out, you're absolutely right, we're with the third hardest hit. What people tend to forget is the road was closed for two years before that. So the downtown merchants not only took the hit from Irma, they're still trying to recover from two years of road closures. So the, the pressure on the downtown merchants is great to try to recover, and they still need more time to recover. The other thing, um, if we pass a Form-Based Code and get that done, we, that property downtown becomes extremely valuable, extremely attractive to developers, and we can move that property. That's it for the stormwater. Um, as far as item 12B, we're talking about the water quality and dealing with the water quality. I support that 100%. Also, I'd like to say a few things, what folks don't realize, we see bacteria counts and all that. Our river has a colony of thousands of bats that live under the Methusen Bridge. They contribute a lot to the water and what's in it. So when you're looking at the water and you're thinking, "Oh, there's bacteria in it," yeah, but it's not necessarily human bacteria. So people shouldn't be flipping out about that. We need to do testing to identify the problems in the places and what the actual things Our water here in Benita Springs and in South Florida, when I first moved here approximately 15 years ago, I was told, "Don't swim in the fresh water during the summertime. There's amoebas, and you can get brain amoebas, and you can get these other issues." Um, I learned that there were black widow spiders. I learned that there were rattlesnakes, and coral snakes, and water moccasins, and alligators, and crocodiles. So, um, our water is dangerous, and anybody that's out there playing in our waters should remember that no matter what. That's all.
And watch out for your swimming pools, because the gators get in there too from time to time. Thank you, John.
And your bathtub.
Yeah, and the bathtub. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hello again, good evening.
Hello again, good evening. Um, want to apologize for not being clear earlier, not the best public speaker, and I have four kids, so sometimes I get my dad voice on, and, sorry. Um, but the point that I wanted to get across is not, has nothing to do with the millage. It's the fact that we've had so many issues on Benita Beach Road, Old 41, it's been very difficult for businesses to operate. Now we're adding an additional fee or tax that gets passed down to all the businesses. That's another thing that makes it difficult to operate. It's, it's not just $1,600. It's $1,600 on top of X, people who want this, people who want that. That tax bill that has come through with the millage rates where they are, and the increase in the value of properties, is a big blow that individual business owners have to eat. And now we have the possibility of additional stormwater tax. I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, and I thank you guys for addressing it, but we have that. We just got a code enforcement violation for lights that have been sitting out for 20 years, wall packs, because they hurt someone's eyes. We have a business meant to protect people's belongings, and now we have a $6,000 bill to go and replace all of these? It's getting very difficult. Benita Springs is earning a reputation among commercial real estate agents as a place where it's difficult to do business. That's the point that I wanted to get across. I apologize for not being very clear. I love the end of what I just heard towards the, uh, water management discussion. Thank you all very much. Apologize for not being clear, and apologize for dad voice.
You're good. I make all kinds of mistakes, and I run these meetings, so don't worry about it.
I make typos.
Thanks, Fred makes typos. Welcome, Kathy.
Well, good evening again. For the record, Kathy McGrath, and as we all know, you cut the meeting a little bit short on the 21st, and I think it was for a good reason. You should have attended that, that water thing, and, but there were a few things I was going to bring up then, because you know, this is my Facebook, I think I've told you this, but first of all-
Old school Facebook, I love it, yeah.
Well, I don't, this is my Facebook. Uh, I think we're all so very, very grateful that we were spared the storm, and I want to thank all the local weather affiliates for the local channels, because they did an excellent job of explaining, and a lot of people say, "Oh, they don't know what they're doing." It was iffy, but they laid out every scenario, and they were right on the button. I don't think anyone knew it would stall that long, but they were, they knew just what it would do. Anyway, the library. I know you, most of y'all were there. How exciting. I mean, we've waited a long time, and we were owed it a long time, and I believe they're going to have, uh, that, that was the ribbon cutting. I believe the grand opening is Saturday, September 14th, so be sure and go there, but, and, um, it just goes to show you, you know, more and more people are coming downtown. One thing I was going to bring up, how about this new business downtown? Downtown Coffee and Wine Company. As you all, we all have been here for a while, know that was the old corner store? Great, just great. And as far as getting back to the storm again, you know, let's not get complacent, because the word is not if, it's when, and sooner or later, we're going to hit, so be prepared. All right, the next thing I want to bring up is the Film Fest, which I'm very proud to be a part of, and we have grown so popular that we decided to divide it into two different nights, two different days, excuse me. The, uh, we have more and more young people, young filmmakers, so they're going to have their very own gala. The, uh, regular gala will be on the 7th, Thursday, 6 o'clock at the Prado, and then on the 9th, Saturday, the young filmmakers will have their own red carpet treatment with all the bells and whistles and all. So the, as you know, the theme this year is Secrets of Benita, and there's a lot of good prizes. So everybody who's listening to this, get online and please go ahead and join. And, uh-
The dates again, Kathy?
Pardon me?
The dates again?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's always the first Thursday, it's the 7th. Thursday, the 7th is the champagne, red carpet pictures, and then on the 9th, I believe it's 10 o'clock on Saturday morning at the Prado, and they're going to have their, their very own gala, without the champagne, of course, but it's going to be fun. And let me tell you, these young people, they're, they're pretty sharp. Uh, let's see, I just wondered, I, I've been finding iguanas in my yard, I just wonder if anyone else has. We're, you know-
I see them every day.
My neighbor said I had one about this big in my driveway. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, we all have a tendency, you guys have a tough job. It's human nature. If you're upset about something, or something's wrong, you should, we know, we show up in force and we speak our mind, as well you should be. But you know, also, every once in a while, it'd be kind of nice, I think, to say thank you if you do something that helps someone, or even if just, thank you. Uh, we had a saying with Pan Am, I'm sure it's pretty common, "It takes 10 atta-boys to make up for 1-0-blank-blank-blank-blank." So folks, you know, don't always complain or be against something. Once in a while, give them a pat on the back, because you deserve it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, very nice. Might be more than 10, depending on what's going on, but that's a good-
Excuse me?
That's very good. It might be more than 10 atta-boys, but that's very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Doit Estment again, um, to answer some questions. First of all, I loved the discussion tonight. I, I really think you guys had some meaningful discussion, I'm glad to hear it. Uh, there was a lot of confusion over that letter. I'm on a thing called Next Door, and there were a lot of people that did not understand it. Um, talking about a reputation, I talked to a neighbor who bought a house here recently who said, you know, "Benita has a reputation as a town that floods, and that's not a reputation we want." No one likes regressive taxes, I don't think, but they tried to compare this fee to the garbage fee, and just because you have a small house or a mobile home, you still pay the garbage fee, and maybe it would be better to have a part of the ad valorem, but it doesn't seem like that happens. And nobody seems to say how you're going to solve this problem if we don't have a stormwater fee. I do believe commercial interest will always come to a town where there are people who want to buy things, and people want to move to a town where it's a nice place to live. And our taxes are so low compared to many other parts of the country. I did hear something that I think needs to be addressed. If a commercial operation has a stormwater management, um, system, they should be able to get some sort of discount like a community that has a stormwater management, uh, system in place. Anyway, thank you all again, it was a great discussion.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate you being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Look at that shirt, is that a maize, is that blue? Blue stripes, maize and blue? Welcome.
Jim Morris, I'm a two-year full-time resident now, and, um, been coming here since the 60s, and my grandpa built a place over here on Goodwin Street, and I've watched Goodwin Street go from a seashell drive, you know, to being paved, then sewers, and being repaved. And I know my dad, he just passed away about three months ago now, um, he had come here about 20 years ago, and we got, when they paved it, they'd at least paved the shoulder to make it a little wider, tried to help on that, you know, because of, because of many pedestrians, kids coming. And what we have noticed, we came here, Barbara came here the last time, and y'all put up a 30 mile an hour, and appreciate that, that's, that's great. But, uh, we still have speeders, and the biggest problem is the drainage in this water discussion. I was in highway construction in Kentucky and, and worked on a lot of this kind of stuff. But, uh, where the crown of the road is holding the water from being able to go onto the Imperial River. When it rains, these kids going to school are having to get out in the middle of the road to get out of the water. Kid or ladies pushing their children, there's just no sidewalk, there's no way to do it. And there's some ideals I'd like to bounce off somebody that maybe we can do to, to try to address that problem. I know right of ways probably the biggest problem you guys have with trying to get a sidewalk on that street, but every street coming into 41, Old 41 from Terry to, uh, Benita Beach Road has sidewalks, except for Goodwin. And, uh, I just, I think we need to address that for safety reasons. But other than that, guys, it's, it's something we've been talking about for 40 years, so I don't know that you're, what we're going to do now.
No, thank you very much, and, um, please, if you have his contact information, we'll set up a time to meet and discuss it further.
Appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Yes, we do. Jim Morris.
And sir, you're welcome to wear maize and blue at the meeting for Matt.
Me again.
Hi, how are you?
I have been here since 92 in Benita, in a mobile home park, and I have really seen a lot. And I know people in every park, I know everybody around, I've helped put people in, in our government here, to help run it, and I still feel that it is very sad if they want to charge somebody $50 that maybe makes 1,400 a month, if even that, for this tax that you people are going to put in, and then somebody in a $4 million, or how much are the homes now? Uh, it's ridiculous. I really feel if they're going to put it in, they need, and I also asked, what happens to people that are disabled and really can't get what they really need? I don't get my husband's pension. He died three and a half years ago, and I'm still trying to fight why a woman's supposed to get their husband's pension if it's more when they die. And it's been three and a half years, and I'm not getting any help. I lost 3,300 a month. So now, they want to go and put a $50 on us, how about some of you that have the big homes, the beautiful places? It doesn't mean nothing to you, but it does mean to a lot of people, and I'll tell you what, if you keep raising my taxes, I have been here since 92, and I'm going to have to go back to Pennsylvania. I helped up there, and I do not like the government, they, they do not help the people up there, and I do go up in the summer, my son is a boss at Hershey at Reese, and it's terrible what they try to do to the people up there. At least some of the insurances here for the old people like us is helping us some. And I hate to have to leave, but I'm telling you, if you think an old person like me should pay 50, and you're in a high rise and have lots of money, I don't think it's fair. And I really feel the people in my park, a lot of them are trying to sell, they can't get hard to anything for an old mobile home. You have to have money to buy it. Nobody's going to go to the bank, because we cannot sell a mobile home with a bank. You have to have money either come from up north to come down to buy it. We don't live in homes. And we have a park that tells us what we have to pay for our water, sewer, and what we have to pay for our garbage. And sometimes it's not fair. Some of the parks are paying more than they should. They don't own the park. At least we bought ours, and we're about done paying with it. We paid a couple million dollars for a piece of property that really, I know the city would love to get rid of mobile homes, but I'm telling you, a lot of the mobile homes are paying almost the taxes what some homes are here in Benita. And I know people, I belong to all the clubs, and I'm telling you, please, think about how you're going to charge us. If we live in a mobile home and we don't have much, our price, our, our income is low, I really feel that they should consider that if they do put this through, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
God bless you, and thank you for saying what you did, because it's true, what happens to old people.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome. I can't get that to switch right now, but don't worry.
That's okay, don't worry about it. On a totally different subject, totally off-the-wall subject, I drive down Pennsylvania half a dozen times a day. We have new stop signs. They are working. People do stop, people do look, with the exception of some screwballs on bicycles. You can be sitting there stopped, they're coming at you, choo-choo, they don't bother to stop. And I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, but I'm going to take my camera on my phone and take some pictures, because that's just as bad. We talk about cyclists, but the stop signs are for bicycles too. But the others are working just fine, and thanks for doing that. Makes life a little safer.
Wonderful, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we're going to, we're going to move along to, uh, city attorney items.
Yes, counsel, I have two items for you today. I am requesting, this is a follow-up to some prior executive sessions, I'm requesting some further advice concerning pending litigation, um, expenses and settlements in the BG Mine cases. For the record, this would be BG Mine versus City of Benita Springs, Lee County cases, number 17-CA000381, 17-CA004036, 18-CA003465, 18-CA006017, and First District Court of Appeals, case number 1D19-1403. That's the first matter, and the second matter is, uh, we're also, I'm also looking for advice concerning expenses and settlement proposals on the WCI Communities and WCI Communities Incorporated, case number 17-CA3966. We recently wrapped up all-day mediations on both those cases, um, and I do want to talk to you about what the posture of those cases are going forward, um, as, as well as some settlement proposals that have been bandied about. We'd be looking to do this the week of the 16th. Um, I'm trying to coordinate with Mr. Theriaque to make sure he's in town, but probably doing a back-to-back either before or after one of your existing council meetings that's already set for that week. So I'll be in touch with you shortly, as soon as I get his full availability about setting those dates, and we'll get it advertised.
I'm going to be out of the country from the 13th to the 29th.
I will- I will...
Off the grid?
Off.
Just checking.
Some of these, I will look, I will look at alternative dates both before and after. Well, because the...
Can you just talk to me and then, or no?
I can talk to you, but some of these cases, I think, might be, it might be better off to, you guys have the ability to have that conversation amongst each other. So I'll look at some dates outside that window and see if there's something we can work out.
First time in three and a half years I've taken a vacation. Very inconvenient.
And Rooney's trying to mess with it, see? Yeah, no, I know. Have a wonderful trip, Amy. Yeah. Did you have another question on that? Anybody else for Derek on that point? Okay, Derek, any other items?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, fantastic. City manager items, Arlene and Matt.
The first item we have before you is the approval of the inter-local agreement regarding distribution of the local tax, fuel tax. And we've discussed this before. This is, Lee County has asked that all of the jurisdictions be on one formula. It's the same formula that we, the city, has been under. The second page gives you a profile of each of the jurisdictions and the percent change. There is minimal change, what we're requesting is .01 percent change in the city's revenues of this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Is there further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
The second item before you, I'm going to have Matt Feeney introduce to you.
Good evening, city council. Before you is a proposal from FGCU. Previously, you may recall, city council asked that we coordinate with the Village of Astero as well as Florida Gulf Coast University regarding some bacteria testing they're doing in response to some monitoring observations that show high levels in the Astero River. We also have the same condition in Spring Creek as well as the Imperial River. So I did meet with Dr. Duke. I do extend his apologies. Unfortunately, he had to teach a class this evening, so he wasn't able to stay for the whole meeting. But basically, we met, we talked about the unique conditions here in Benita Springs. He worked up a protocol and a proposal for about $30,000, $30,162 to be exact, to conduct DNA testing and source testing of what is causing some of these high-level bacteria. So this should give us a better insight as to what the sources might be, whether they're human, or birds, or bats, or something in between. And that will point us in the direction of what the next steps would be.
Bigfoot.
We did budget $25,000 in the upcoming budget, so this is a little bit, a little bit more, but not significantly more. So we might be coming in the future with a budget amendment.
Okay. Counsel, yeah, Amy?
I think, it was really interesting to see his proposal, what he's doing. And so I was intrigued by the science, the scientific approach. But I was a little confused. Will the final report be like a year from now, or will we have interim reports? That's, I didn't quite follow it in the verbiage.
I need to talk to him a little more in depth, but basically, it looks like, you know, they want to capture a dry season and a wet season. And then from there, they'll be working on a report that you'll get kind of mid-year, you know, to start to understand. So I think you're going to get some periodic progress reports from them. The final, final report, you know, and this is contemplated at the conclusion of a year, but I think you're going to have whatever results we start to see coming much sooner than that.
I very much appreciate that you made the effort here because as we've had many months of discussions on this topic, I think this is a step in the right direction.
Greg, did you have something on this?
No, my only question was, is it's going to be in next budget year, so.
Yeah. Fred, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. Like, for example, can we also test Oak Creek?
This proposal is specific to where we had those elevated levels, and it does not include Oak Creek.
Oh. Are we testing the Imperial at the headwater and midway, and then all the way out to the bay mouth?
Unfortunately, I don't have the doctor here. It is developed based on where those elevated levels were monitored. Those were monitoring, the data really comes from the Lee County Department of Natural Resources, so that's kind of the jumping-off point. They do include utilization of boats and kayaks to, you know, to catch some other areas. But, you know, kind of the framework, so to speak, is where those, you know, year in, year out, high levels have been observed through the Lee County monitoring program that's been going on in our area.
Okay. Counsel, anything else?
So moved.
Second? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Yes, so one of the other things I'd like to give up is tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, the staff will be here as an open house for any of the remaining folks who have additional items to turn in for the buyout program. We are going to be submitting our application at least 10 days prior to the application deadline as we receive more points for that. So we're going to be cutting off our application period sometime at the end of next week. But tomorrow evening, staff will be here. We will have bilingual staff here as well to help anyone with any questions they have on the program, helping them get their last-minute documentation and information into us. And we'll be continuing to work with those residents through the application period, but we are going to close our application period early in order to be able to receive those additional points. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, the mayor and I had discussed, but to bring it before counsel, is last time we scheduled our zoning board meeting on the same day as city council, instead of having one on the Monday. Just wanted to make sure as a consensus, we will continue that. It seems to provide a better attendance level for everybody's in their scheduling.
Is that okay with everybody as a rule? I mean, it's, it's an imperfect rule, but for now, we'll go with it and see if it's, yeah, okay.
So we'll be advising through community development that the Monday is no longer, we're going to be going on the Wednesdays as well. Also, before you all, we briefly discussed the proposal we bring forward for the RFP for the downtown. The group that, should we decide to move forward with them, would want to immediately have some individual meetings. I will get with you, Councilwoman Corumba, because they were looking to schedule them mid-September to get a jumpstart on it, because we'll be bringing the proposal on September 18th. But if we can maybe have a conversation scheduled before or after, we'll work to do that so that, because they wanted individual comments from you all.
Great. Fantastic. Wonderful. Great job. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, dynamite. Good work. Okay, we're going to move on now to mayor and council member reports. Amy?
I have a, well, I just want to follow up to the discussion earlier with a gentleman who came up twice to give a, in the public hearing. Interpreting what he was saying, I think he was commenting primarily on, I think, the extent of regulations. I mean, he talked about a lot of different things. Could we have some follow-up in an assessment of how the regulations that we have impact our businesses? And I know the one he was talking about was lighting, and I kind of understand that. And we have dark, we have a dark sky initiative, and maybe that's how it impacted him. But could we just get a report on that? And I have a question about the state of emergency. Is that still operating? Do we have to rescind that, or what? The one that we voted on?
It'll expire on its own in seven days. So this Saturday it'll expire.
So it'll expire automatically? Okay, because I think that's a good idea. And I just want to report that I did attend a transportation conference that was sponsored by the Horizon Council, which reflected some of the work that Senator, some of the items that Senator Pasadoma mentioned, including, and it was attended by FDOT people and, what was the other one? The...
Railroad.
Cherokee, is he from, is he from FDOT?
Lee County.
Lee County. And there was a railroad person and the airline thing. So it was, it was really interesting because I think it emphasized the fact that these entities are refocusing some of their attention on what we call complete streets. So I think we're on the right track with our transportation projects. But I also, one of the things that was, one of the things that was really interesting was the railroad person representative who was a salesperson. And I, maybe you all are already aware of that, but evidently, the Seminole Railroad has brought out that interest of CSX along the railroad. So, you know, I don't know if that's going to help us in our interest in doing the Sun Trail, but hopefully, if we can get some of the state people involved, that maybe we can make some success there. And let me see, that's for the transportation. I just want to mention that September 11th is Patriots' Day, and maybe you're going to mention that. It's at 6:00 PM at the fire station downtown. And I hope everybody...
Downtown?
The fire station, right?
Old 41.
Where they have, and we had moved the...
Monument.
Monument there. So it's, it's really good that we're going to have this. I hope we all can attend. And of course, you know, my, my best caring wishes are extended to the people of the Bahamas. I know we didn't have that kind of devastation, but those of us who have experienced hurricanes and had issues with the infrastructure, you know, we really empathize them in a sincere way. And just a point of appreciation that the exhaust fan has been turned off again. So I don't know if that's a permanent thing, so that it really helps with my hearing, which after three and a half years, I don't know why we didn't figure out how to turn it off before, but it really helps, and I really appreciate that. And I think that's it for me.
Great. Thank you very much, Amy. Greg?
No, I just want to say, my hearts and prayers go out to the people of the Bahamas. I witnessed it firsthand last year with Mexico Beats and Panama City. So I kind of know what they're going through, so my heart and prayers go out to them and Godspeed to them. Hopefully, they get some help sooner than later. And the other thing is, Amy touched on it, is September 11th is coming up at 6 o'clock at Station 1 on Old 41, 27490. We have a meeting tomorrow with Laura and the city about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. I know we're planning on shutting a road down, just one lane on Pennsylvania for demonstration and for overflow of person, of people. And that's it, sir.
Thanks, Greg. Laura?
My heart and prayers go to the folks in Bahamas as well, and perhaps to, let's hope next meeting we don't have any more prayers for the Dorian impact. And I'd also like to say that Stephen Slackta was appointed to the Fire Commission Board. So our prior District 3 city council member is now on the Fire Commission Board.
Great. Thank you very much, Laura. Mike?
Just also, I've been sending prayers to Bahamas, and otherwise, I'm good. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Fred?
Yeah, I would like to make these real quick. Number one, at the next meeting, can our finance department give us what our reserve balance was before Irma and what it was afterwards? Because I'm positive we spent money because of Irma that was not counted in those figures, but that'll, that'll come up with some. Second thing, is it possible at the meeting where we talk about the stormwater assessment, tax, whatever?
Monday night.
Monday night. Can we have a good, hard, crisp number for trailers, what they're, what they're going to pay? Secondly, I want to know, is it possible?
And Fred, I'm sorry, and condominiums, because there's some confusion there.
Yeah, there's, yeah, right. And then, is it possible at that meeting, could we implement that if your home is, I'm just pulling a number out of there, 950 square feet or less, and instead of the 50 bucks, it might be 25 or something more reasonable and that? Because most homes that are that small are also on the lower end of the appraised value too, unless they're on a million-dollar property with a little house. So I just want, we don't have to, you can just tell me after the meeting, but I wanted to bring this up. And one other thing, I could be persuaded, although somebody will not be happy about, that in order, if we go forward with that assessment, that maybe we could extend when the dark skies comes in and these people don't have to pay that money quite as soon? If that's possible. I think it is, but, and I'm only one vote, so. Might fail six to one or something like that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Fred. I want to thank Senator Pasadoma, obviously, for being here with, to discuss our legislative priorities, and certainly Greg, and anybody, everybody that will reach out to the other members. I'm looking forward to that, doing maybe some of the intangibles or going that extra mile, so to speak, that maybe some other cities don't. So thank you, everybody, for that. Congressman Francis Rooney and Commissioner Ray Sandelli will be in town tomorrow night at one of the local organizations, private local organizations. So it'll be, it'll be good to have them in town and...
Francis Rooney won't be here.
Okay.
He's canceled out.
He will?
Okay.
I got a phone call from...
That's okay. We'll, we'll solve that tomorrow night, and we'll give a report on that. But I'm looking forward to getting some updates from them as well. We've discovered, discussed the 9/11 event, which certainly, I hope folks can join us. It's just an amazing remembrance of 9/11. And Greg, thank you for taking on that ceremony and looking forward to that. And I wanted to give an update in terms of the resolution that was passed this summer is finally going to be, get, get put to the test, so to speak. The last week in September, Mayor Kevin Ruane is president of the Florida League of Mayors, as we know, and we're work, he is working with Senator Rubio and Senator Scott. And the strategy is to, and you've heard me say this before, we've got commitment from the White House on the Everglades, we've got commitment from the United States House of Representatives on the Everglades, commitment out of our governor, commitment out of our state senate, commitment out of our state house, and commitment out of a lot of governors. The last piece of the puzzle is the United States Senate. So we are going to meet with our local senators, right, from Florida, but our locals are also going to pinpoint about somewhere between 6:00 and 11:00, and I know that's not, but inaccurate, but of other senators that sit on certain committees that the mayors from Florida should go talk to. So it's not, and it's exactly what we did this summer. We moved it from a Southwest or even a Florida regional issue to a national issue. And that's the same approach. We're going in with a full head of steam, and that will be the last week of September. And a lot of times, and we've been to those, you kind of have the theory of strength in numbers, right? You bring 50 mayors? No. It's going to be very pinpointed and very targeted. So it's going to be a good approach, and I'll keep you updated on that. And I just, I go back to the legislative priorities again. Let's, let's go at it harder than ever. We've been going at it hard, so it's hard to say, let's go harder, but let's go harder. We'll do it. And I'm confident of this council and very thankful for the discussions that we had tonight and moving forward. So that is it. Is there any more announcements from anybody? Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the amendments, which would be from August 21st, 2019. So moved. Is there a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public, Kathy, please come forward. Thank you.
Yes, let me close the meeting by this. I didn't say it before, I want to remind everyone, there are legitimate people collecting